I'll just mean to order the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of our country, to which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord. The Constitution of America.
At the moment, I'll be running the meeting as vice chair and Bob Jones will be taking minutes. Kristen is out of town this evening. Any additions or deletions to the agenda items? Appears to be none. Everyone's signed in, everybody know each other. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting. That previous meeting was July 16th.
The only thing that I noticed that I think is out of context a little bit is item seven, A zoning administrative's report. And we reviewed his report. The per him weight item. I think we, Mike made the comment that we were gonna have him contact the attorney in Manchester. It says that Mr. Wilkins moved forward with taking proper zoning enforcement actions. I don't believe that's what we said. Does anybody else remember the conversation, as I?
I don't remember.
Well, I think Mr. Wilkins would consult with, with the active attorney.
Okay, so it probably should've been referred to-
Written that way. Right, okay.
Because I knew the attorney's name was brought up.
Right, I think that's the way we kinda, okay, so I'll, I'll-
Mr. Wilkins moved forward.
We unanimously agreed to have Mr. Wilkins consult-
Yes.
-the attorney and move forward.
Right. That's, but there wasn't anything in this that mentioned the attorney, so I think that needs to be in there. And with that, I would move to accept the minutes.
Any other comments?
I'll second that motion.
Do you have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Pre-requested appearances by local citizens and visitors. Rick Bro asked, oh-
He's on his way in.
Perfect timing. God, you're good timing. We're right ready for you.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, have a seat, have a seat, or where?
Actually, I do have something that might help me still help.
Okay.
Go along with why I'm here, if I can show you guys some photos.
Sure.
So, I'm here in regards to, and just some road work.
I did a drive-by, too, after you called.
Look at those. It doesn't quite give the full effect, but it's part of, part of what I'm just hearing voices a little bit about is, you know, the effects of, of the road construction and the way some of, the way some of the things are left after, and I get there not finished with this project in particular, but I just was wondering what, what the follow-up is as far as trying to make this, some of these accesses off the road, once you do the roads, what's the procedure to try and help these accesses as they were, you know, because now with the height that they're raised and the pits that they're on, it's very hard to get in and out of some-
What number would you put, what, this would be Herrick Brook Road number, what would you guess? As far as an address, just so-
Paul 60, when I lived over there, somewhere around that.
Okay, just gives us an idea.
Well, the property belongs to my wife, 43 former mother.
Okay.
And it's our field that he's trying to get in and out of.
Right.
And you can't get out, it's just like trying to climb a slate.
Yeah, it didn't, so I mean, the situation, you can go down into, no problem, of course, going downhill is fine, but trying to come up out and, you know, real, you know, given all situations, I realize it's slate is fresh and whatnot, but not realizing what I was about to get into, I wouldn't have, wouldn't have approached, you know. But it didn't take only just a split second of the tractor tire starting to spin, I just sunk in. I sunk in, you know, a foot or more into that sharp jagged slate. And I was a little quite hung up, just with the load of hay behind, pulling me right back down the hill. It was just an unpleasant situation to begin, which was a 20-minute project which turned into the afternoon. So, I guess I just wondered what the quick follow-up is, once, once the road improvement to-
Did you end up with any tire issues?
I did, I ended up losing a tire out of that. I lost-
On the wagon, or on the tractor?
On the tractor, tractor tire. That'd be my third tire on this, on this project up here. I've lost a car tire and a truck tire, but I think it was the tractor tire that prompted me to, made me come out and just talk to you guys about how things are there. I also would like to add, and I was always very quiet about this, and I've never, never asked for anything or never complained, but I, I do have around the $1,100 out of pocket that we fixed a driveway and lawn and mailbox area last year after the road construction project. But I just assumed that that was, you know, not gonna ask for anything, let's just get it fixed. But due to the way the project was left, it took two cans of loads of gravel to straighten out my own, my personal driveway where my mailbox is and get our lawn back, so it was evenly sloped back to the road rather than a hole. I guess I'm only giving you that information so you again understand why I decided to come in and speak up a little.
The board have any questions?
So, you're, I assume that was a rear tire?
No, luckily it was a front tire on the tractor. If it was a rear tire, I'd probably be asking for more, just listening to me. But still, I don't have an estimate. Estimate on the front is $250. That's non-repairable. The other two tires I was able to repair, one was a $65, the other one was $35. Again, I'm not presenting anything, I'm just giving you the information.
Keith? Got any comments, Keith?
Well, I don't know, we would-
What's the follow-up and where?
Follow-up on this would be that it would get gravelled over top of it. I mean, it's, we put, because of the depth in there, it was a pretty good drop down into there off the existing town road. And obviously, when we raise it, we're going, there's two loads of rock to put in there to take the grade to where it is right now. So, I mean, as a follow-up, we would gravel that the same as we will all driveway entrances.
So, the policy of the town is to return it to reasonable access?
Reasonable access, yes.
Okay, did you hear that, Rick?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's just that, that slate's not gonna work in that access, it just isn't tamped, you know, it doesn't tamp down, it's, it's pretty steep, too, I don't, I'm hoping-
Is it a compaction problem, or?
Probably, it's not holding, it's sloping down.
It's pretty steep, I drove by.
Okay.
But when will that action take place, is putting driveways back?
Had we known he was gonna be in there like that, we probably would've done it with some of the loads that he took out there, because we had gravelled a good share of that road where we, you know, where we have slated.
Do you have more hay to cut off that field, or?
No, no, I'm done in there, I just, I don't know. After Sunday's experience, I was, I would ask if there was a better way to leave things when accesses and whatnot.
When do you think you could schedule that, Keith?
We can do that most any time.
Okay.
At least, I mean, our grader is coming home now, so we'll be-
Is this access to your house driveway you said, too, Ron?
Yeah.
Same access?
No, I mean, they both ran, piled right into the gravel, they got it so high now. It seemed like they got papered out of them by the end of the day or something, but hey, you got a piece of, come here and do it. Like, like we- We have, we've had Rupert's trailer out there, that's what we've had, so. And to be honest with you, I haven't been out there in a week, so.
So, within a week, can we tell, Rick?
Yeah, yeah, that's reasonable.
The board have any comments or discussion or solution?
I think it needs to be done sooner than later, so if you can get it worked in sooner, that would be great.
Okay. Anymore? Ron, have you, is that why you're here, too, or, yeah, okay. Any other comments?
I have your picture to pack in.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming, hopefully we can get it remedied. Okay. There weren't any other pre-requested appearances. So, any announcements? Mike may have one, I don't know what he's gonna do, but, okay, zoning administrator's report, doesn't look like we have one, or do we? I guess we'll go to Harry. Zoning administrator's report.
I don't have the zoning administrator's report.
No, we'll have to go by that, for now.
I looked at Kristen.
Yeah, she's, she's out of town.
It's all right. Shall I be to read through that?
Sure.
Okay, this was the report from the July meeting. Item number one was bylaws, update and amendments. The latest issue of the town bylaws adopted on January 30, 2017, were reviewed by five regular commissioners and the Alton Commissioner. One member of the community was present, that was Frank. There was much back and forth debate about several topics, including conditional use procedures with one update, the language agreed to, zoning permit application requirements with agreements to reconsider wording for the requirement of a surveyor's block plan and reference to the state residential energy code. Agreement with the required revision to the wording of posting of permit, section two, item five, to change listers to assessors, since we don't have listed anywhere. And finally, the inclusion of the new definition of the term school that was ratified by the select board 2018 after public hearing, that has never appeared in any published amendments, so it's kind of, I'll do that.
You skipped one there.
One of-
Two-year limitation on the validity?
Oh, sorry. Agreement to study and discuss at the August meeting, the two-year limitation on the validity of an issued permit, as well as the possible addition of, addition of, of a certificate of completion at the close of the work of permit.
Okay.
As of right now, the permit is just moving open.
Since we don't have any certificate of occupancy, yeah.
Item two is discussion of town ordinances. The commissioners' president reviewed listed town ordinances now on record and agreed that a number of them need to be updated. There was specific discussion regarding a need for an update to the parking ordinance, amendment adopted 1993, and the adoption of a new noise ordinance. There was uncertainty as to which municipal body is responsible for recommending the adoption of new ordinances and for the update in amendment of existing ordinances, as well as which municipal body is responsible for drafting the text of new and revised ordinances. It was suggested that the select board has jurisdiction and responsibility in this matter. Is that the case? Is it always the select board that comes up with it, that they come up with it as a result of public concern, or?
I think as far as road speed limits, for an example, we have to have an ordinance to back up any posting of land, I think that's the way we do it, Keith, right?
The change and we're altering, they require the traffic study. The limits are based on the traffic study recommendation, usually the sheriff's department has done that in the past.
Because we've done some traffic studies-
Yeah, the traffic ordinance is pretty lengthy and it's fairly up to date, I think.
Okay, that's okay.
But there's, you know, everything from log ordinances to fire debris, junk ordinance, fire debris, I guess would be your field, right? Junk ordinances, park and recreation, parking ordinances, which we talked about last one, road commissioners' ordinance, which is simply a statement of duties for the road commissioner, sewer ordinance, snowbed, snowmobile ordinance, and traffic ordinance. Traffic things, please.
I mean, nothing that says that the planning commission could propose or suggest some to the select board informally or however, is, am I correct in that, or?
There's, I don't know of any direction, I couldn't find any, any reference to it, even, even state, uh, state-
So, it seemed like if the select board had jurisdiction over it, they would agree to look at changes? Am I incorrect in that, or just common sense?
So, the select board would go back to, what's the planning commission making recommendations?
Oh, I speak for myself, but, this goes.
I think we would ask for their input, or we would form a committee to investigate it, which the committee's already formed, so I think that would be the way to handle it.
Item three was updates to the town plan. Time was running short after we finished these bylaws, took a lot of time, so we put the, that discussion off until August. The zoning administrator's report, we did not read out the zoning administrator's report because there was not enough detail for us to understand what was going on. And item five was the Vermont Community Leadership Summit in Randolph on August 12th. I asked the commissioners' president if they had any interest in going, I had the papers.
It's too bad, it's a good, well-run meeting, I'm, I've been told.
Yeah, it was, this is the second annual.
The Vermont Council of Rural Development, Paul Costello and-
Yeah.
It's got a talented team.
It's quite a distance to go up, everything's way up north, so you wanna spend three-hour drive, one three-hour drive and back.
Right, right.
For a long day, so.
Any questions for Harry? From the group, either?
Good.
Okay. Road forms report?
Very little ongoing, we're gonna slay down the road, it's where the driveway keeps moving over in the head of the main now. And then, that'll be gravel and we'll move down the road a little till either checkered or domino, and start there. The graders coming home, ready to catch picking it up, we're getting that back.
This way, or?
Yeah, I, I talked with him today, and Ray said he would get on quicker to fit his schedule, so I would think that's in a day or so.
I see there's some discussion in the treasurer's report about the price, we'll take that up then, or?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was involved with Julie in the communication, but I am, I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it then, maybe Mike will be there, and then they're not.
I think Mike has a discussion with Craig over there, too, maybe.
Okay.
Send him an email, let him talk with him.
Don't know. We'll find out. Any other concerns? Bullet for Keith? Dodge, Dodge truck, oh, go ahead.
Winter sand, what's the?
There's some made in the pit right now, not enough. We'll have to probably process some more or get some somewhere.
So, we're making our own, then?
We have, in the past, that's what we've done, yeah.
So, then this new gravel we're putting down will be contaminated with that clay?
Well, I think the sand that we're making is acceptable. I mean, over time, year after year after year, with nothing added to it, the potential is very for contamination, so we have questions.
Okay. Everybody's good with that, bye.
Is this mixing in some crushions, too, or? No.
No, it's nothing processed, only through a screen.
Okay.
So, my, my feeling is along with Ed. If we're gonna get sand out of that pit, the, we all know that there's clay veins in there, so how are you gonna separate the clay from-
Well, we, we take, we take it out, that's all we can do. We wanna purchase it somewhere else, we probably should give out the ball and put it out.
Well, I'm, I'm with Ed, I don't think we oughta be using that sand out of that pit after we put a bunch of serious money in covering the, the slight rubble. I just think that it's, it's not, not a good move, but I guess I would like to hear from the other two board members, and maybe we can wait till Mike shows up, but I don't, you know, I'm, I'm against using sand out of the pit, because I know that clay veins are in there, and, you know, that's, that's my opinion.
We'll let you comment, Bob, if you're ready. It's all about money, and if we buy material, that's less slate than we can do, and less, so it's kind of darn if you do, darn if you don't, but if we wanna patch up our mud holes and everything else, we might have to go for another year or two with some so-so winter sand. It's, it all depends how much time those guys spend. There is some good sand up there in that pit, they've just gotta, you gotta kind of care when you're picking through it and making sure you don't put any clay lumps in through the screen. But if we spend the money on material, we aren't gonna have money to buy gravel and gravel the roads, so.
I would say at this point, we haven't seen any of the impact on the roads that we have upgraded, slated, and grabbed. I mean, it's an accumulation over a long period of time on the other areas, and that does in can create problems. I haven't seen any major issues on the roads that we have updated.
I think short-term, you won't see it. Long-term, over 20 years or so, without adding any gravel, which is the case on most of our back roads, but if we add, add low-quality sand for 20 years straight and no gravel, we're gonna have a problem. It just depends how much money you wanna spend.
Why don't we come back to this, wait for the chairman to be here?
I think this is one of those deals where you can pay me now or pay me later, penny-wise and pound foolish, but.
Is that okay with you guys, if we let this bounce till chairman comes? And see what, how he wants to proceed, or at least involve him in the discussion? Any news about Dodge Truck, or still working?
Still working. I mean, I think Ben has ordered the parts, and he said, end of last week, and it's in the middle of this week, and I've written else, I'm from this week.
Would the parts have to be ordered and the repair done irregardless of whether we swapped or what?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Because otherwise, it'd just be a carcass.
Yeah, he's, no, I'm, when it, it's a schedule, I mean, he might come tomorrow morning and one at noon, too, you know, I mean, excuse us, I don't know what to tell you, but he's, he's onto it, so.
Okay. How are, how is our relationship with Rupert as far as trade-offs?
Well, we're doing well, I mean, I-
Are we fairly even, or we're not?
No, we're not way behind. Actually, you know, they give us some extra because they also get their rock from us, so they're not opposed to contributing some more time and resources to our project. I don't know that they're gonna be willing to do what, the extent of what they have this year, year after year after year, but for this year, we're in good shape.
Okay. Well, we'll hold that off, talk about winter sand until Mike gets here, and we'll, if there's no other discussion at this time. Got the town clerk's memo. John Thrasher has proposed an amendment to the public bylaws. Article six, we have a copy of, about schools. Did you guys discuss that?
He has a word up top.
Okay. Okay. Hmm. Don't know.
It's dated.
Uh, there is no date. This thing from John Thrasher. The memo from the town clerk says, "Bullet point, John Thrasher proposed amendment to Pollock bylaws." Sure. We all got a copy of it. First time we've seen it in any form. Sit down, look at it, and we'll-
I'd like to thank you for my time, but I'm still on the clock, so I'll excuse you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rick.
Next bullet point is a memo from Robin Chestnut Tangram, state legislator, emailed regarding his recent conversations with town residents with regard to the Route 30 school street intersection up here. This is dated July 30th. Dear members of Select Board and Planning Committee, I'm writing to you regarding a longstanding challenge in Pollock for visibility at the junction of School Street and Route 30. I know you are well aware of the problem, but in several conversations with town residents, they have encouraged me to reach out to you. Personally, I have witnessed several near misses. People have talked across or turned north onto Route 30. The problem is unintentionally exacerbated, excuse me, simply by having lush plant growth or large vehicles parked in front of the old pizza shop. Parking is at a premium downtown Pollock, but perhaps blocking off the space closest to Route 30 is a safety imperative worth a trade-off. Question mark. Other steps may not require official access, but simply be agreements with landowners and tenants. I think he may not realize that that's a state highway in that area, we have no control I am aware, at least, of some of the town's past efforts to lower the speed limit on Route 30, which is also a worthwhile effort, but I'm wondering if there are actions the town could take before one of the recent near misses becomes a tragedy. Short of large speed bumps, it's a tough nut to crack. Sincerely, Robin Chestnut Tangram.
Do you have a question there, Brad?
Sure.
This, this right up here is a corner area, and it's my understanding, based on the signage there, that it's a no parking area. Cars are always parked there.
At?
On Route 30.
On the Max.
McChesney's vehicles are parked, and a no parking zone, and-
And you can't see around there's cars?
No, no, no.
So, and it is a no parking zone, so I, you know, I think they are required to some enforcement.
It's a state highway there. The state highway comes pretty near to the drain by Max Market parking lot, next to the driveway that goes behind the store.
Yeah, as I say, I think the answer is enforcement of the traffic there.
Have we ever had the state help us out on any of that, or?
No, in a few years, no. But we have, I mean, there is no parking on the bridge. They've made that quite clear, you know? They painted it, and, you know, there seemed to be, if you park there now, you know you're a violation, for sure. It sounds to me like he was looking at the parking in front of the brick open.
Right.
That's what they were.
One, that's the way I heard it, from the intersection back towards the store, and I believe one car length from the intersection is also a no parking zone.
Okay.
It's not painted, but I believe it is, and definitely the one on McChesney's, on Route 30, show there is a no parking, because that's the one that is real restrictive about being able to see that around.
And there's no parking across from, uh, to the store on the bank, the Monument Bank. There is no parking.
Yeah, that's no parking, and it's only gonna get worse when they open up. I don't think Robin, in his memo, I mean, he understood the problem, but the state logistics, but that's a new one about that, I think one of the tenants has a large vehicle that parks there now, and-
Oh, is that the store?
Jim Andrus backs his truck in.
When they're working, right.
Kinda messes some left-hand view.
And you've gotta open your windows, you've gotta turn the radio off, and it's hard if the river's running hard, because it sounds like there's a car coming when it's just the river, so it's a continuing discussion. Julie?
So from my reading of that memo, it sounded like he was more concerned with Max Market's side, but in my opinion, ninety-nine percent of the problem is the McChesney's side.
McChesney's.
Yes, but if that's a state road, and he is our state rep, he should be involved, I think, in getting some action down there.
Frank?
Maybe the Select Board could request that the state encart and copy Robin, a request that they come down and do a safety study in the intersection. They have engineers and surveyors, and you can look at that, and then, once, that would be his first step, and we'd probably keep this.
It's been done before, though. It's been done several times since I've worked for the town.
And nothing-
Is the result posted, man?
Uh, it would be, shouldn't be available through the regional planning boards. Most of those were, that's who was involved in the traffic studies, and the traffic council. They actually, you know, walked through one time with, you know, trying to establish pedestrian access and crosswalks, and there was a lot of discussion, but nothing has ever come to fruition.
And what'd they say about an enforcement of a present situation?
Well, I don't know that any time they've been here, there was a parking problem there, so, whether they have been here when there actually is one or not, I don't know, but, no, I think you, and the only thing you could do in those situations is his enforcement, you know, send them a reminder, and then if they choose to ignore it, then it'd be a ticket situation.
Most, most of us natives, when we pull up there, we turn to the right and go up on the brow and look both directions, and just make a beeline for whichever way we're going.
And hope you have traction on the hill.
No, it's, it's been an ongoing discussion. There are people from West Pollock that complain they have to come over here to vote, because they have to go through that intersection to get to the town hall and do it.
I think the only thing that saves us, is coming from Sheldon's down, if you're making a turn to here, is that that person making the turn has a really good view of all places, thank goodness. And I don't think the person at Max Store realizes that, that that person has a great view of the other way, and that does save us to some extent, 'cause I do that every day, and, but you do spend. Ashley?
The other part of that, John, is when you make a request for parking enforcement, make a request for speed enforcement.
Okay.
Because nobody knows thirty miles an hour down somewhere.
Right.
And you hear their tires squealing when they walk across the bridge.
Right.
Even coming from Granville, they're always locking the brakes up in front of the corner fast.
Eve, did you have your hand up on this issue, or was it Frank? It was one of Frank's, okay. Bob?
Yeah, my enforcement issue, the existing parking regulation.
Okay.
I don't know about the, at the Max Store, where that car is, is that a no parking area, too, where this truck is? So that's illegal, is legal parking, then?
No, because he's parked the wrong way, he's got half the road lot in the front.
Okay, so it's a parking violation there. On Route 30 North side, it's a parking violation. My suggestion is that someone on the Select Board speak to the command director of local barrels, and tell them what the situation, and that you'd like enforcement. They have no choice but to come down here. They may not come down right away, but they'll come down. My guess is that, you know, they can issue a summons, or at least if they know whose car it is, they can ask them, tell them, look, you can't park there anymore, you're gonna get a ticket if you do. That'd be my suggestion.
Frank?
I've told me that you got a stop sign right out the bridge there, right on Route 30. Put a stop ahead, and put a stop coming this way. Clear the situation up, if you clear that parking up, so anybody coming in, lick his foot, he doesn't know that corner turns right here. You could have somebody that doesn't know the corner that's traveling Route 30, and go through there a little faster than normal, and somebody coming across, and they have a problem. Stop sign, it's, if you know lights, you can put a stop sign, stop ahead, and that would clear a lot of the problem.
Okay, that's a continuing discussion on that issue, for sure. The next bullet of the memo from the town clerk, I'll let Mike get up to speed in a minute or two. Please note, Julie and I have been talking about having coinciding hours, like beginning September 1st. Initial thought that we would both be open from nine to four, Monday through Wednesday. I, Deb, will still work through, with, work through without leaving the office, and still work nine to twelve on Thursdays. In other words, the change would be that Deb would not have late hours on Tuesday evenings. She prefers not to be here alone, for her own safety, and apparently there isn't that much traffic that cannot be rearranged by appointment, a special appointment, if somebody's work hours prevented them from getting to an open clerk, town office. Neither of our salary hours will change, but it keeps both of us here at the same time, which has its own benefits of interaction, information. Deb will be out of the office this Wednesday and Thursday, and will also be out of the office on Monday to attend a meeting in Barry's. Sue will be in the office to cover all three of those days, and I'll let Mike address the situation with Hal Wilkins. So, that's the town clerk's memo. Over to you, Mike.
Thank you.
We're gonna come back to-
Oh, yes.
Our road formans' report in regards to the-
That's all.
That's all. Okay. Mike, we did have some unfinished business with the road commissioner's report. There was a question from the board to Keith about, what are we doing for winter sand? There was a concern that we're putting on some of the not-as-high-quality material as sand onto these new gravelled roads, and possibly contaminating that surface, and whether we should look on doing something different. And I said we'd wait till you got here to... There was a comment from one board member that the more we have to pay for finished sand, or better quality sand, the less we can do for slating miles. So I guess we'll return to that discussion now, if you wish.
Right. Well, my, my view is that I see that the sand that we're putting on has a lot of silt, and it does turn to a slimy top coat on, on the road, and even, like last, last year I went over Wait Hill Road after we had done that, and it was, it was a time where just after, and I don't even remember if it was in the fall, after some rain, or something like that, and as good as the base is on the road, the top was still a little slimy from a year or two of sand on it, and the silt that's working up. I think that what I've seen with the stone, and Keith said that on my road, it's a little bit different of a story, because a car doesn't travel as fast to kick it all off, but it definitely, the stone, putting more stone in the sand, maybe even more, more than we have, certainly, than we can mix into our sand, would be a benefit. It appears to work very well in Dorset, the back roads that I travel. I go up into the hollow quite often in the, in the winter, and in the spring, and that, that road holds up a lot better than, than the other roads, and we go almost to the end of the Upper Hollow Road, and it's pretty nasty in spots up there, but the stone on that road seems to make a huge, makes that road much better. So I don't know where, we'd have to look at some numbers to see if we could add half-inch stone to the sand that we have to make it better, or? What, what is your opinion about it, Keith?
Where do you want to spend on? I mean, we could add, we can add stone to what we have, and it doesn't embrace silt, you know?
Right.
Dorset uses all the water from the start, that's what they use.
They use all straight-up, like a half-inch product, by the looks?
No.
And it's just straight up?
And that's because, basically, the price of it, for what you can buy, processed materials, sand, or whatever is comparable, and they have a pretty easy draw right down Route 7 from SLC.
Right.
I think the big question would be is, if you had quality product like that, could you manage it to get useless volume?
Right.
You know? And now we put on what we need, you know, and with that, we may have to, it would have to be managed because of the expense of it, for sure.
And it would have to be much more scrutinized, how heavy of an application, and how often?
Somebody like Stan Martell, or, you know, that's a lot of people been buying sand from him. Charlie Brown has sand, but it's no better than one week, it's, you know, it's margin on the basket, so. If we're going to do it, we need to get on the ball, and get some prices, and make people aware that we're going to be looking for.
Is that something you could work on? I mean, it's hard for us to make an intelligent decision without any kind of numbers in front of us. So-
Yeah, I'll get some prices.
See what, see what is available, and such, and... It's like you said, you know, I mean, our, our material budget's our material budget, whether we use it for summer, or rebuilding the roads, or winter sand, it all, it's all money, one way or the other.
Your winter sand budget is, doesn't vary very much.
Right.
A little bit of processing costs, that's what it's like.
I guess before we could really, we'd have to decide what it, what we think we'd be looking at for a quantity and an amount.
Budget-wise, I mean, you don't have a dollar and a half in your license area.
Right.
If you do the processing, we have a little bit of screen.
Right. So you have maybe a buck fifty, and we're looking at six, eight? So that's a considerable, that's a considerable investment there, to however I know the roads can get, with the silt that we're, that are on the roads now, they get very slippery. Until we get better numbers, we, it's harder for us to calculate how much, and you have, you have a rough quantity of, of what you feel, or?
Well, we have put up in the past three thousand yards a year. I don't know that there's ever been a year we've used all that, but we did that once, and then we replaced what we've used every year.
Right.
So, you know, obviously, last year, we had probably fifty percent left in the pile over there, and that's probably, you know, but, basically, been a hundred loads on each side of town.
Okay. I guess that's all my questions, but anybody else have questions, or you guys already asked yours, or?
Yeah, we pretty much-
Pretty much went through it, okay.
So I'll put some prices together for next meeting, and then you guys can discuss it. I'll just, I'm not gonna put it out to bed, I'll just quote some different vendors.
Yeah, see, so we have some number of what we're looking- Yep, so we have some number of what we're looking at, so. Salt is, where are we at salt? I'm just thinking about it right now, that's just-
We're on the list when the test, you know, contracts comes through, it would have been notified. So then, which is, we are not allowing it, but it'll be August, September.
August, September, okay.
Have some idea when state bid comes in and then we'll be an opportunity to piggyback on their price or whatever price a vendor offers for municipalities to go with. Don't think they're just paying huge pricing fees.
The excavator, is that gonna be here through August or?
It's gonna be sort of into August, yes.
Into August, right.
I think we had it from the 18th of June, so the 18th, 20th of August, that's when we're gonna have to start thinking about moving on.
Yeah. You still intend on doing those other two cover projects while it's here though, right?
And it would also be awful nice to have some time to organize the board over there so that's ready to start again on at some point. Right now, we've got a lot of box canyons there.
Yep. And you'd still, I mean, a couple more days on the end of Havington maybe or?
Well, no, one good day will get us there tomorrow, but we may, we've still got the intersection to do. It's gotta be dug down, so we may move down the road and come back and work on that in conjunction with one of the other roads.
Okay. And then-
We'll be down there tomorrow to the intersection.
And then you'd still intend on like a little bit of work on Chat Clark and Sawmill?
Chat Clark and Sawmill, and then we've got something to do in Rupert. It's more for the area.
Right, so we probably aren't gonna be able to give that excavator up to 18th then, are we?
Not big.
It's probably gonna be the full month. What's the rate on that?
Sixty-three hundred a month.
Sixty-three hundred. And the bulldozer, will that need to stay as long or?
Ah, no, 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 no. Once we move to January, the horses and the other, it won't be any good.
Okay.
But Rupert's paying a tab on the whole.
Okay. How much, like a week or two for those guys, do you think you'll be on or?
Yeah, yeah, they, theirs is, they're filling in the blanks. They don't have any big and long stretches to do there, you know, they've been going at it-
Right.
Twenty-plus years.
Right, exactly.
So they've got odds and ends to finish up and nothing, no long stretches.
We didn't have any grant money on any of this work that we've done so far this year.
All right, I guess that's all I have for questions for you. Anybody else have any questions for Keith or we all? Are you gonna run right off Keith or not?
Um, depends. Do you want me to hang around or not?
I just, I'd like you to look at-
Does Julie have a paper copy of that or?
I didn't end up, oh, you had a paper copy of that? The proposal from the sewer plant, for the sewer plant operation. So now we're back down to the town treasurer's memo? Is that where we're?
The last item.
Oh, from the town clerk, right. Okay, we got an email today that Hal is suffering from some health issues, so he's gonna be very limited capacity for a while and see what, see how it all works out for him. I'll keep you posted on, as I learned, it was a very, very vague email this morning. Did you see that Keith or? Okay, so until we know better, how this is all gonna work out, we'll have to- He's still working with Meredith on a couple of the outstanding issues and stuff like that, but I think we're gonna have to do some investigation on some options. Treasurers. Did we, do we have the new, the correct tax bill to sign? Okay. Is it? Is it in my pile? I didn't do a very good job sorting my pile very good. A hot one. Okay, so last week in our process of switching stuff around, the homestead versus not homestead, I guess was the key words that we were-
And I fixed that, but I had put together two, I put together numbers and then I adjusted them in then and I printed the first one instead of the second one. So the ones that we voiced out loud and agreed upon-
Yeah.
Was not what was written on the paper that was signed. So this is what was voiced out loud and was agreed upon and is what our taxes have been set at. But we just need to flesh some signatures. There's the clerical error.
Does everybody understand that? Does everybody, anybody have any questions with that? We just signed the wrong paper basically. Two warrants to be signed today.
Do I have to sign?
You just signed it.
I already did, okay. Oh.
You wanna sign it again?
No. Pulling up.
Okay. Twenty-eight checks to be signed, 11 payroll, 17 accounts payable.
Keith, is that excavator rental prorated or is this just a portion or? I think he just said sixty-three a month, this is seventy-five or seventy-two fifty. So, I didn't know if it's-
I don't know about.
Can you just follow up and make sure it guys look like the agreement?
Did you sign something with sixty-three hundred, Keith?
I have a contract.
Anybody wanna make a motion on the minute, on the warrants?
Make a motion to accept the warrants?
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, as we discussed at the last meeting, Keith, Mike and I worked together to draft a letter to NorTrax requesting a $2,000 discount on the total grader repair and we have been approved for it. If anybody knew.
By whom?
By the Craig at NorTrax.
Okay.
We wrote a letter explaining that we felt that they really didn't do a thorough job looking it over and we couldn't believe that that seal would just go bad without something, some other kind of indications causing it to fail. And Julie wrote a nice letter and he got right back to us and said he'd take back two grand on it for- He was sorry that the experience, he assured us that he had done that on a couple of the jobs, repaired a seal with no other problems and he said that that, it wouldn't be standard practice to check the transmission screen, but he kinda, he kinda waffled around that, I would say from the letter. He didn't outright say it, but you know, a thorough job would have included checking that for other signs, but at least we got to truck it back, so.
Good.
And Julie's attached a spreadsheet for the goal with the wastewater proposal.
Except that Julie forgot to propose so she came in and brought it.
Okay.
Does Kristen get copies of any of this stuff?
I can get her, yeah.
So, she has it all spelled out here, it goes from, basically we're looking at the 650-47 right now would go to 763-85, correct?
And right now it's really at 630, but because we usually throw a couple grand in from the savings to bring it down to the level that we've kept it at, which has been 630.
That's probably one of the red flags that kicked up the-
Right.
And we had been doing all right and we had, the money was there every year because we didn't have any major expenses because of the renovations and stuff we're completing. We have some money in an improvement fund, right, there's-
In the capital improvement?
No, not the capital improvement fund, isn't there a-
Wait, there are savings?
Yeah, isn't there, wasn't there, we put 10 grand toward it last year or something like that, I think. It was a line item in the budget for 10 grand to go to the wastewater for upgrades or something like that.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know where that, if that just goes into the savings or the wastewater user, in the wastewater account or?
We put 10 grand in the budget from, to go from general fund to the savings?
Yes, it was voted on. Last year was the last, last year was last year. We felt that because of all the issues we had, we needed to boost that emergency fund up, so I can't remember. I don't remember the numbers on how much there is, but there's a savings fund in case there's any kind of catastrophic event that occurs.
Right, and I can't remember exactly what's in there, but I don't, I don't wanna say it's like-
I think it says fifteen.
So the new proposal-
Is this an article?
Right, oh, it's 15,000, didn't we?
What am I looking at?
Fourteen thousand and change. But the new proposal is the new company that's gonna take it over.
Right, and we don't, did Keith copy that? That was a proposal that I sent you guys, I think, yesterday via email. So, and basically what it boils down to is the fact that Jeff was giving us such a good deal at 33. And she initially came in at, she was thinking like five or 55. And I said, oh wow, that's way too much. And so she said, well, let me see what I can do and she come up with 45. And one thing that you and I talked about, shutting it down on weekends, she said that the way it's written in our permit, we can't. Our permit requires testing daily. Because I asked her that when we were talking on the phone. I said, could we shut it down for the weekend? And she says, no, your permit requires daily testing. And there's no automated testing that's accepted at this point. And she says then it's definitely a problem that all these small plants all over Vermont are having.
So even if you're not discharging-
Discharging, you still need-
You're gonna have to go through there and run daily samples.
Yep, that's the way she explained it to me when I asked her about that.
Now, the article, more than article appropriation, that goes towards the maintenance and operation or it goes towards-
That-
Upgrades and equipment and so?
That went into an upgrade in equipment fund so that in case something failed, like when the RBCs failed, all of a sudden we needed to have $20,000 or so to fix them.
Can I read the article? It's Article 6, shall the town vote to raise, appropriate and expend the sum of 15,000 for the upgrade and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant? And it passed.
So that goes into, that's kinda-
That's not day-to-day operations, that's-
That's kind of it, in case there's an event at the sewer plant that we'll have some money to cover a portion or hopefully all of it. And I'm not sure where the other money was coming from that, I think we ran a little surplus for a while.
I don't know where this whole account started, but there is, there's a wastewater money market which is sort of the meat and potatoes of wastewater bills, right? That's what we pay, that's what we operate out of, and then there's a savings account. And that was what was part of the thing that we talked about last meeting, was that we had been historically kicking a couple of, like two, three grand in from the wastewater savings to keep the fees at 630. So there is a wastewater savings account that we have, a fund that has, it has like 41 eight. But if we need to keep some, if we need to keep keeping the fees at 630 with this increased cost, it's gonna be closer to nine or 10,000 that we have to kick in every year. And that's not sustainable beyond four years.
Right, and as we talked about last week, if we could offset this so we staggered this load with some of that money, it would make it a little bit easier on the users so that they didn't go from six-
630 to 770.
Seven, yeah.
Maybe 765, it's a lot.
So, right, so if we could, if we could give them at least one step in between.
And we do have time on setting the rate. Our first collection for wastewater is in November.
Right.
So, you know, we need to have the bills prepped and sent out in October. So we really won't even like have a decision made.
Right, so-
To have a decision made tonight.
We should, we should have a decision made on that rate by August though. By the end of August really to make it, to make everything work in a fluid. Okay. All right, so we have it pretty well clearly spelled. Does anybody have any questions on how this?
I had a question just on what their proposal covers. Does it cover out-of-the-building repairs like the pumps or filters on these pump stations?
It never ha, I mean, I think her proposal, we always covered any pump or anything like that. All come out of our budget.
Of his oversight, you know, they would probably call anyone sewer and have them come and do it.
Change of fil, I mean, because I remember there was a concern of debris in one of the filters- filters there.
That was in the plan itself, but it was, uh,
Oh.
Pump stations, you have to have confined space training, you have to have all, meet all requirements to be able to even go in there and work. So we're looking at almost a specialized field. I'm sure some towns.
And testing equipment.
Testing equipment you would have to buy, be able to, you know.
You have to drop.
So that's, so her proposal is no different than we're running under now.
What we had with Jeff, where they would call.
Just twelve hundred dollars more, basically.
Right.
They, they operate and, and when something like that goes wrong, they orchestrate getting it repaired. If they.
Right.
If it, they'll bring in outside sources, even their company has, has facets that does that kind of work too.
Okay.
So, but it would be at a.
So it's no different than coordinating the sludge or anything else?
Right.
I would look into some insurance recommendations. I didn't see anywhere in there where she would be working as a subcontractor, the way that contract is written. So it would be the same guidelines as anybody that works for the highway department. If we hire an outside contractor, they have to have their file, on file here, their insurance policy. And there probably is a different minimum for that type of work as opposed to excavation, but it needs to be looked into anyway.
Right, well, and need a copy of her insurance policy, right?
I have a question back at the, the fees.
Mm-hmm.
If, uh, if we decide on the fees we're going to charge, are we going to put something in the paper to the effect of why the rates are going up? Or are we sending letters to the users? What are we gonna do?
I hadn't even thought about that at this point, but I would think that it would be appropriate to, to notify people why, you know, at least.
Why, why the rates are going up?
Some form, some form in the, in the wastewater rate, in their, with their tax bill that, the operation costs of, Frank?
I picked up last meeting that some, somewhere near half the users are delinquent on their payments currently, or that wasn't true, but.
It's probably not that now, but at the first point when it was turned over, it was a significant portion of people had gone delinquent on their wastewater.
These numbers are based on, on everyone paying? Right.
So if you, so if you're short on the, on the delinquents, you don't have the income no matter what. Um, and if you're gonna go up the, the probability that you may have more delinquencies. Now, one of the questions might be, because there's two payments that are made on, what if you grow the payments up into more payment smaller chunks? Because some people can maybe figure monthly or.
Or quarterly.
Or something along those lines, or bi-monthly, where, where a bill comes, we, you know, it, it would just print out different, they'd have it just tear off and pay it, uh, a little bit at a time, because some people, you know, with a big chunk that you have to pay is, is, that's a big chunk towards opposed to smaller chunk they made. Okay, now it helps your cash flow, I mean.
That's, that's an option that we can consider as, after we determine the rate, I guess, Julie, we can talk about that sometime and see how we could make it work with our accounting system and stuff like that. Just, just to see if it's a viable option. And, yeah, I guess we'll have to come up with a, with an explanation. I think it's fair to, that the people that are on that system deserve an explanation on why the, why the rate has gone, gone up so much.
Would that be a one-time rate increase, you think, or that's gonna be ongoing at that?
It's gonna go up to there and then it depends on how, how well we can maintain, you know? It is probably gonna be an inflational thing and, and she's kinda taking a little gamble coming in, into this, you know? She, she has.
It's automatic five percent increase after the first year written in there.
And that's renegotiation, it's reached by August.
I, I breezed through it, but I didn't read out those details out that carefully. That's why I wanted to share it with everyone, so. So it'd be a five percent, okay.
So the net increase is what, from six thirty for what, how much?
It'd be seven, six, seven hundred and sixty-three eighty-five is what we need to, to operate with those numbers, right?
Without any supplement?
That's a hundred and thirty bucks?
Yeah.
That's a, uh.
One, one of the things I do, oh, go ahead Chuck.
I'm making it so not on the trace.
One of the things I do know is when we initially started this upgrade, we were looking at a proposal about seven fifty is what they thought, or more. And, and it ended up turning out that we were able to get a ridiculously low loan. We hit, we hit that at like the best, absolute best time. So that loan was, was so low that we were able to keep the, the costs down.
And you also have a recommendation from the state that your current rate is unsustainable also, right?
Right. And that's what Julie's working on too. So, I mean, the fact is, it's probably gonna, gonna keep creeping up. It hasn't crept up for a while because of good fortune, basically.
And there was a buffering that the town was keeping.
Yeah, there was a small buffering that they can't, can't be there anymore.
So you're looking at a one thirty this year, maybe another one thirty next year?
No, 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 no. Not, not anything like that.
Mentioned in the letter, we can communicate this, what projections might be as well as.
No, we're not gonna do any projections. We're just, there's, there's a big jump here and if there's a small jump, I mean, we're not, we certainly don't have any accurate way to analyze any projections to, to put anything out there. It's, Doris?
What happens with delinquencies? Are there many in the town or?
It goes through the same process. Can we, can we sell property for delinquent wastewater tax? So it goes through the same processes as any other town?
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Because this is, um, to me, I think it's a great asset to be on this, this.
Absolutely.
In, uh, in our area. And certainly, uh, we're on a slate, you know, so drainage is a, a, I guess questionable.
Right.
And, you know, people are building and putting in new things. So that was just a curiosity question as to how you.
Another thing, another thing they said is that approved, approved septic system is, is now between twenty and thirty thousand, I believe, and they're rated for twenty years. So, even if, you know, in this state, it's, it's very expensive for the waste.
Well, I can see.
Oh, absolutely. So, right, and that, and that just proves it right there, that, that we're, we're, even at seven fifty, we're better than, than the average.
I agree.
So we're very fortunate for that.
I agree.
Yes, thank you.
The, uh, the, because there was a thought of shutting down for the weekend and it's a state that won't allow these testing on a daily basis. You might be able to talk to Chuck Roden, Chesten Sandrigan about just looking something through which would allow for plants to be more.
That's a, that's in a lot different test. So, what we got right ahead of us right now is this, this budget, proposed budget. Um, we don't have to act on it right now, so I think I'd like to wait and get this other one done, but it gives us an idea. Right now, we have the, the wastewater agreement from, from VTOMs. And that, that was our best option. The other option was two thousand dollars a month more from Simon Systems. And that's basically the only two op, options that, that we came up with. Um, to hire somebody, we, one, we'd have, there was, we'd have to put them through school and then there would be no redundancy, because if we hired somebody to operate it, it would be a part-time position. And then if they were gone, we'd ha, we don't have any redundancy, no one to cover for them. So with this, with the VTOMs, we would have, three, three people would, would be available to cover. Um, the only thing that Jill did say is that if there was an emergency that went off when no one was around after services and stuff, if we could have Keith go over and look at it and, and just assess it to see if they needed to come down from Burlington or what, what had to happen. And Keith was okay with that.
Well, if we're paying them that kind of money, I would think that they could come from Burlington and check it.
Well, what they say.
For fifty dollars an hour and point five eighty-five.
Oh, plus their other.
Right, right, because it's, it's not, it's not part of their scheduled.
Oh, okay.
It's not, yeah, we're paying them that kind of money to do this, this teeny little window of work, which is very unfortunate, but.
You might be punching a reset when they get here.
Right, so that's why they're hoping that, that we could have somebody.
Punch the reset.
Right, go check it out and see if it was, if it was that easy.
So there was nobody then that could replace Jeff or whatever, kind of on that type deal?
Right, for that kind of money.
Yeah.
That's the same deal. He, he worked as a subcontractor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the same type of deal. He didn't have employees, he didn't travel, he lived in West Paula. He, and he filled in when he wasn't gonna be there with people that he knew in the business. So it's an acceptable operation.
Yep. He had a couple connections that he would work for, so they would cover for him. Ian said, Ian, the guy that's doing it now, said unfortunately, he didn't do you any favors. He did you a huge favor, but unfortunately, it was a, he set you up to the fact that if, if he wasn't there, it was huge. But I think Ian's, Ian's charging us thirty-three hundred and, and only coming once or twice a week. He said, and that's barely enough for him. So, by the time he runs the, the samples and stuff. So, does anybody else have any questions about this, uh, this contract? I, from, from what I, what I looked around, and I've talked to Keith a little bit about it, and I, I really don't see any other viable option. The way we're doing it right now, Ian wants it to be done, Keith wants it to be done, Keith doesn't even have an operator's license. We're, we're running under the wire right now, but the wire, wire's gonna get tight. They're, they're, they've been, they've been, the state has been considerate with us because of the situation that arise, but we're not gonna be able to roll that way for long. So.
So we need to sign that part of it tonight?
Basically, so that she can, she can get everything in motion and start the eighteenth of August. She wants, we're gonna have a little bit of overlap while Ian helps get her on, on track. So we're gonna, he's gonna still have to be on the payroll for a little bit in a, in a advisory, uh, position, so that he can help bring her up to speed, so she doesn't have to learn everything all over again and take a lot more time. And that was calculated into the system.
So we need to give you a motion, um, to sign the contract for, what's the company's name?
Uh, VTOMs.
In your contract. I would make a motion that we allow Mike Preacher to sign the contract for VTOMs for the wastewater treatment facility in West Paula.
At forty-five hundred per month, a one-year contract.
At forty-five hundred dollars a month for a one-year contract.
Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Do you have any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Yeah, all opposed.
Motion carried. I will, uh, I'll get this sent out to her tomorrow and copy you on it. Something else that she wanted to.
How many tax bills are going out? Do you know, Julie, off your head?
Tax bills here, eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
That don't help, no, that, uh.
They're gonna come down on eight-five. Just wanna get this back to Julie. And then I'll just, just sign that one and, and scan it.
Is it signed? Do you want me to scan it?
Um, I, we could do, I could do that right now. Or I could do, I was just gonna do it tomorrow. I was gonna do it tomorrow, but if you want.
You're gonna send it off or that's fine?
Yeah, I'll just do that tomorrow and copy you on it. I'll sign it and scan it and then send it off tomorrow. Okay.
You're at, um, Bob, the lane we're trying to come through.
Okay, emergency manager, tractor.
I don't think you finished by now.
Oh, I didn't. No, I, I'm jumping, pushing here. Okay. Ready to repair. Okay. Next Monday, at the latest to get out the tax bills, right?
Yep, but I was able to finish stopping all on board today, so it'll go out tomorrow.
Okay, so we attached a spreadsheet for the propos, wastewater. So we have that. And she reached out to USDA regarding the letter that we discussed last week about the financial situation with the wastewater treatment plant. Now, gentlemen, explained as part of the loan, they are required to fill out a financial questionnaire annually. I contacted the company, RCAP, that they recommend to work with. The gentleman from RCAP is on vacation for two weeks, but we'll get back in touch after we start discussing some things we can do to improve this. He also mentioned a free workshop coming up that you may want to attend. Excellent.
Right, and I don't know if it should be me attending or what, but I'll get more information from him in the next couple days. He was, he did give me his email address and he said he would be a little bit communicative through that, but not, not, he's not at full time. And RCAP is oral community assistance partnership, and there was one little word on the website, that the, RCAP National Office manages a federal program through the United States EPA, providing training and technical assistance to small community and onsite decentralized wastewater systems to help improve water quality and protect public health. Through direct funding from the EPA, RCAP provides training and technical assistance in areas such as training on long-term sustainability and effectiveness of small systems and decentralized systems, evaluation of treatment and/or infrastructure alternatives, training on preliminary engineering evaluations, assessment of management approaches and their effectiveness, training on improved water and energy efficiency, developing appropriate rate structures, education of local officials, identification of funding alternatives and/or use of green infrastructure, among other activities.
Wow.
So it sounds like they do.
There's a lot of options.
Can you read that again a whole lot smaller?
She's good to talk to RCAP.
I just put a shortened answer.
The minutes, the meeting minutes, Bob, are just a snapshot. Don't hurt yourself.
Yeah, Julie made a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Julie discussed some training that she is planning to attend.
And I don't remember what, did you have a sticky?
Yeah.
What was the bottom?
It said, it said, sign the tax rate that we did already.
We did it, yep.
And the mail, and then everything else is mailed and done. Okay. So are we all good? Thank you. Bob?
Remember what you wrote?
I didn't.
Yeah, you, I'm not here for any special reason, except normally I send a monthly reports and, um, at the end of the month to Kristen electronically. You, you all review it in the first, uh, meeting. But we didn't have our department training tonight, so I thought I'd go over the July reports.
Oh, perfect.
Face to face with you.
Excellent.
And I'll send these to Kristen electronically. So first, uh, emergency manager director report, um. So first, uh, emergency manager director report, um, this will be very quick, participated in a conference called CAP four exercise, just so you understand what CAP four, you'll see this in subsequent, uh, monthly reports. CAP four, it's catastrophic exercise, a state of Vermont has a catastrophic exercise they do every two years, so the last one was two years ago. We took part in CAP two, um, the town called it emergency operations. And, uh, we're going to do it again this year, and, and the state does it to exercise its emergency operations plan, there, it goes on for like four days, and Vermont Emergency Management's involved, the state police, the National Guard, and so on. They encourage towns to also, um, exercise their plan, and they try to get as many towns as they can. So we will, uh, participate in that, our participation's only like four hours, we'll open up the emergency operations center, the school, and, um, we'll, we'll go through a series of, um, communications with Vermont Emergency Management up in Waterbury, with the state police, with the Ameri, Agency of Transportation, um, I'll have the two fire chiefs involved, Keith doesn't know yet, but Keith will be involved, and, uh, one or two of the, uh, select board members involved, uh, with making some communications with select board. So, again, it's just a, uh, way to exercise our, uh, for our emergency operations plan, so we're all on the same page when a catastrophe does happen, like an Irene or something like that. Uh, met with the Red Cross, Red Cross personnel, every two years, they, they have to do a survey of both of your shelters, so Red Cross, uh, got ahold of me and said, look, you're up for your shelter review, so we did a shelter review, the, the school has a shelter in West Paulup, firehouse, so that's all been reviewed, uh, we'll survey and we'll get the survey results back, and, uh, we'll be on their list of, uh, the American Red Cross list of shelters. Jay Loogie, Elizabeth Gibson, and myself, um, exercised ourselves opening up the ELC last week, we went down there for our computers and, um, um, just got through the, the sequence of what we do when we get there, things that we have to do, um, just to refresh our memories, because we don't all, open it up very often, we don't go through that. So we did that, we found out though that, uh, a printer that we had, uh, doesn't work anymore, that is, it's one that I just donated, I had an AEM jet printer, but the drivers don't exist anymore, so we are purchasing, or we have purchased a, a new printer. The other problem with that printer was because it was in jet, the AEM jets would dry up, it wouldn't work, so we, we got a, a laser printer to use at the emergency operations center strictly for us, and, um, I think it was a hundred and ninety dollars, uh, to come out of our emergency operations budget and move some other things around and, and pay for that. Yeah, that's it, the only other, yeah, that's it for that, uh, for emergency management. Any questions on emergency manager director report?
Okay.
No questions? Health officer report, a couple of things, um, investigating a complaint regarding, um, defecation on the grounds of a local slate quarry, workers not having, uh, facilities and defecating on the ground. This first came in in last March, I investigated it then, spoke to the owner, one of the owners of that quarry, he, um, agreed to put in porta potties, evidently that hasn't happened, because now we got a second complaint, and, uh, I haven't witnessed or have evidence of what, what's going on there, but, uh, I'm pretty sure that they don't have any facilities for workers. So I called, uh, first I called OSHA or VOSHA, Vermont OSHA, because I know that OSHA requires facilities for workers, um, and found out that, uh, because that's a quarry where they're actually pulling the slate out, it doesn't fall under OSHA, falls under something called EMSHA, the Mining Safety Health Administration. It's also a federal, uh, a federal, uh, organization, so I called EMSHA, the local representative who happens to be in Albany, um, explained to him what was going on, and he agreed that that was unacceptable, he could be sending an inspector there and, uh, next week and he'll, uh, have them, uh, put some facilities in there for, for workers, so, um, that should remedy this, that situation. Uh, the only other thing I have is that, uh, there'll be three rental housing co-inspections done by, by tomorrow, so that was done, will be done in the month of July. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Bob? Wastewater, I guess, is pretty much all. Anybody more, have any more questions on the wastewater? Everything is passing, I haven't heard any. Everything satisfactory down there, Keith?
Things working, Singapore and Denver.
Have you been trying anything to, that you've noticed improvements?
Very little change with anything I tried.
Okay.
One thing I did try is the Palmer, I put one federal perineal pump, so I can monitor outside, it's going through and not have both pumps in one barrel.
Yeah.
One is definitely feeding faster than the other.
Yeah.
I shut it down and, and one clarifier for a while, saw very little change, didn't notice any significant difference, so, actually, I know, fully stuffed that they don't like and, and sample like doing it, so, I'm back with the other one and, um, got the loader running on, on that now, it's got to be the manual or off, so it comes off and on, on a sense, I don't know what trips it, it's working.
It does it.
And, well, aeration should be a contributing factor in that process, so I'm just trying different things.
Right. That's all we can do till we stumble across whatever, what's the magic? Okay.
Not spending enough time there really, to be honest, to really, uh, you know, be thorough in some of these things, so.
We have, now we'll have our new people in there, maybe they'll be able, with their experience, I mean, that one guy has a great deal of experience, so it may be very beneficial for us, maybe he'll, he'll see something with, that no one else has. We can make some major steps forward. All right, anybody else have any questions, wastewater? Old or unfinished business, library stacks. So, where we're at with that is that Ashley came in with a, with a, a bid, and according to what I understand from your proposal is that some of the recommendations, the requirements, I guess, that were initially outlined in, in, uh, one that Ralph threw up, you did not include in your bid, is that correct?
Mine was more of an open bid, um, I tried to include everything that, that was obvious, there are some things that don't apply because I'm not in the city.
Does, does, okay. Now, John, you were going to look into that a little bit, did you have any chance to-
I made a call to Ralph Nimmin's office, and he hadn't called me back, seeing whether, telling him the situation, we were kind of at a standstill as far as the, uh, the bids we had received under his specs, um, that we had asked him to do, um, were unacceptable, and we had tabled, uh, last, last meeting's proposal by Ashley, um, and seeing whether we could merge, find a way to find acceptable specs, uh, where we could-
And he hasn't, he hasn't got back to you?
When did you call him?
I called him this morning.
Okay, ask it.
Well, my, my overall purpose, according to, um, timing material bid that direction, was that I, I strongly feel that select men need to take over this job, need to pay the architect, you don't know what your architect's charging or getting to it.
Yeah. Was it around a couple grand?
That's over on top of the other previous bid.
Yeah.
I, I more or less, there's a lot of things in there that really are needed in the town of Paulup, and they, twenty-two thousand, or seven, concrete stats, just seems hell way up ridiculous.
Well, Ralph did call me shortly after, and he pretty much said that, you know, you guys do whatever you want, but he's out of it, there, he's, he's, you know, if you go that route, he has nothing to do with anything, so, you know.
So then we have a, yeah, he doesn't, he won't take any responsibility if we don't, if we don't follow his specs.
Nope.
Harry, would you care to comment on any of this, with your professional opinion, or?
Yeah, I don't know any of the details.
Okay, so you don't know any of the details. Would you-
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't blame him for not wanting to take any responsibility-
Right, would you-
-follow the drawing specifications.
Would you be willing to look over Ashley's proposal and look over Ralph's specs and, and in your professional opinion, give us a, a, an opinion on it?
Yeah.
Okay. And see if there's some way that we can, that everything can be a level playing field without, without such things like a, you know, a portable toilet and, and, you know, necessary on the job site with-
Traffic control officer and-
Stuff like that, you know, that, that we can-
There's things in his bid, like where the railing goes up right hand side, it conflicts with the door handle, that's not possible to do. And by giving the select board the decision, you can make that decision in the field without affecting the cost, that's what I would say. You, that's accepted one of them previous bids and that decision was made in the field, you got an additional charge. By, by giving it to you as a timed and material bid, um, and estimated numbers is what I tried to give you, so I don't just shoot in the dark, uh, that lets you make field decisions without necessarily increasing the cost, you know. I'm a taxpayer too, I'd like to get the cost of this thing down, because I think it's totally ridiculous to pay that much.
And I, okay. Eve?
Well, I was just wondering what Ashley's bid was.
It was a, more or less a labor bid, a bid for each piece, each of the equipment, an hourly rate, an hourly rate on a physical labor, disposing of the, uh, demo probably creatures that go back to town garage.
Right, not put up in the pit.
The other bidder's back, back in April, they were probably just going to come the way back to their own base, you know. You know what?
So do you have an idea, I, I mean, I didn't do any of the math on that.
Fifty-six thirty.
Fifty-six?
No, 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 it was more than eighty-four, fifty-six was only one, but that's like a phase of it.
I thought it was fifty-six.
Fifty-six thirty.
That was for that paragraph, that had to add the two together, John.
Fifty-six, plus the, plus the two.
One was kind of crazy.
Oh, the twenty-five hundred to twenty-eight hundred was-
Yeah.
Well, that wasn't pointed out at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
When I read, when I read that bid.
That they were, that they were to be added together?
So that's close, it's over eighty-one hundred or eighty-one to eighty-three hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I broke it out so you know what.
Right.
And what's the fifteen percent there too? Isn't there a fifteen percent figure there for something?
Yeah, that was added for, uh, uh, profit and overhead on, on top of, otherwise, when, when we get concrete, you get copies of all the slips of all the materials and everything we use, will be a cost, that, that's covering my overheads all afterwards.
So fifteen percent margin, basically.
On, on top, on top of the, you're going to add markup to concrete, fifteen percent?
I'll, I'll mark up, uh, at the end, I'll mark it up fifteen percent.
Your materials.
Other than that, everything will, will be a cost.
Okay, so this is nowhere near a firm bid then?
No, it is a line the hour bid, it's what I was trying to give you, to give you control.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's also like, uh, at the previous meeting back in April, when, um, the Brighton Construction Company says that, uh, that railing is no longer available, it hasn't been made in twenty-five years, and, uh, the architect didn't know that, and, uh, and the price I got on railing I got from Arcade Mile is not the same company, but it's, it's in all practicality, it's all, it's basically the same railing.
Hmm, okay, so-
And the other thing is, you know, he, he called for galvanized railing, well, a hundred years ago, we didn't have galvanized, hot dip galvanized. So where did it, you know, you got the historical aspect in here too, which, you know, they're looking over your other shoulders.
So you're halfway then to anyhow, you're, you're pushing ten?
So, if, let's say if it was twenty-five hundred for the material, on the top part of the quote-
The estimation-
Twenty-five to twenty-eight.
That, okay, that, plus the fifty-six thirty equals eighty-one thirty, and plus fifteen percent over that. Okay. I guess we didn't read it over that close.
Well, he, he never said a word, because the figure I spoke-
Yeah, I didn't read it that over.
Anyhow, for the figure I spoke was the fifty, whatever.
Right.
And now, tonight, there's a anyhow.
Right.
So-
It's also printed, so it's hard to read.
Well-
So we have Harry, Harry wants to look it over. Is, is the board okay with Harry reviewing this and giving-
Most definitely.
Can I meet with you?
Uh, John would be better, he's, you know-
Okay, you have the drawing?
I'm-
Got it.
I know.
I'll have to get the specs to you.
You'll get, you'll get this-
We'll get the specs to him.
We'll get you the information.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm-
Doris?
Did this not go out to bid before?
It did go out to public bid, and it came in at like twenty thousand dollars, and we felt-
Twenty-one and twenty-two, I think.
So.
And that had something to do with an architect and, uh, the fact that this is a historical building, right?
Part of it, and part of it was the architect had, had some qualifications in the bid that-
Were overboard?
Well, that, that could be, you know, excessive for this, for this particular project. I don't know enough about it to, to make that decision.
Do you have to accept other proposals because it once went up to bid? I'm just asking some of the, you know, legal questions perhaps.
Well-
I'm not familiar with bid versus proposal, you know, when you're now accepting proposals, do you need to open that up to the proposals? Uh, you know, I just know that-
Well, why don't we just patch, patch the steps and call it well enough?
Well.
I knew that's what we'd end up doing.
Is the library on, is the building on the national register? Is it on some-
Yeah, right, it's Vermont Preservation-
I'm not sure, it's Vermont Preservation has-
Preservation and Trust.
Vermont Preservation-
Vermont Preservation Trust, yes.
Eve, you had a question?
Well, I was just going to say, I thought one of the reasons that these came in high was because of, of high bond, that was in the original specs.
Yes, that was also one of the reasons.
Two million dollars would have reduced it one.
It went, it was what, two million and then went to a million?
So that's now been reduced?
It was reduced and there was one bidder, that was Ashley, so they didn't fall out of the, you know, we were supposed to be inundated with bids if we lowered it to a million. All the local contractors were going to flood us. Whoop, did I say that? But anyhow.
Frank?
As a taxpayer in town, instead of paying twenty-two, it makes much more sense to pay ten, and if you were so inclined to spend twenty-two thousand, take the ten thousand dollar difference and put it into the sewer.
Okay, thank you, um, so-
My only question is legality, is that's the bid process, that's all.
Well, all the, the initial bids were all refused, so, so we, we refused the two initial bids, because we didn't feel that we wanted to spend that kind of money to do the project.
So they were formally rejected?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so-
Because, but to- But because, but to go a little bit further, and I realize it's a lot of money, but to confuse the situation even more, because this was, nothing was done with this before the first of July, between what, 17 and 18,000 that was in that account has gone back to the taxpayers. The end of the year, there was between 17 and 18,000 left in that maintenance fund to be used.
So that is no fund for?
Well, there's whatever's in there this year, I think, is it 20 this year?
Oh.
We'd have to look and see, but I have, no, there's, you know.
Okay. So if everybody's okay with Harry looking at it and giving us his comment, honestly, I, I, I don't, I don't understand the whole process of reading that well enough to want to make an informed decision without some input.
The story I did get on the reason for so many pages of rules or whatever was it's a, it's a public building and he gives those out with a public building.
And there's a standard.
It's a standard, yes, it's a standard for a public building.
Yeah.
Which, that is a public building, so.
Whether it's Paulette or Main Street Arlington or?
Yeah.
Okay. So for, for now, let's, let's see, let's go with that and, does anybody else, has somebody else?
Getting me the materials.
Yeah.
That I can then give to Harry, okay?
I would just like to add, you know, you pay the architect, so the prints are yours and I have no intention of doing anything other than what was on the print. I did intend on following the print, I mean, that's what you pay the architect for.
Yep.
So I think that I'm wiggling, taking a different track right now. I'm just trying to give the select board more, more option with his original bid, your architect was the commander in chief of this project. You got it, man.
Okay, thank you Ashley. Any new business? Or is there any other?
What you're doing?
I don't know, I mean, we were, we're gathering more information.
Don't need to vote on that, go with.
I, I, we're not, we're not making any decision. We're gathering more information before we make a decision. I don't, I don't know.
Concrete steps, guys, are concrete steps with railings. What part don't you guys understand? I mean, it's just as simple as that.
Unfortunately.
I made the motion before, I didn't get a second, so I'm not opening my mouth tonight about a, a motion. But I want it clear that I'm not in favor of getting somebody else involved in what we should be able to handle. Simple as that.
Okay, well, thank you for putting.
Refloat your motion?
You're right.
Any.
Didn't have courage enough the last time and I don't think anybody's going to have the courage now. I will make the motion. I make a motion that we accept Ashley Waite's bid for the concrete steps.
Does anybody want to second that motion?
Taxpayers, that's the way it goes.
No second on that motion, then we have to move on. Is there any other, new bit, old business, older unfinished business? Ashley?
Is there any progress on the maintenance situation?
As far as I understood, he was supposed to get, he was supposed to get a letter that he needed to become in, in compliance and I will, I will follow through on it.
Hal sent me an email last Thursday, cried, he said he was in her office and they were drafting a letter. I had, I had requested a copulae letter, I should get a copulae.
Right.
But I haven't heard anything since.
Okay. And I, and I haven't heard anything since. I've had no communications with him in the last couple of weeks except for this morning and, and that. So now I have to follow through.
About his health?
Yes, so I will, I'll try and follow through and if I can contact.
He already had an email in fact.
I'll contact Meredith and, and get, get that all and keep that forward progress.
From the way he talked, he was giving her more of the background of the situation.
Right.
And she was going to write the letter.
She was going to draft the letter and, and I understand that he had a specific number of days to come into compliance, otherwise he would be fined. Is the way, is the way we left it.
Yeah, I don't know what's the next, she, she going to send that back to the select board design or she just going to send it as her?
I believe, I believe he can, I believe the zoning administrator can authorize that. So I'll, I'll work on, on following through with that.
She might be, has been there as well, so I don't know.
She's, she's working for the town.
Yeah. I, I just like to want to be informed at all times and slip through the cracks a long time ago. We don't want it to happen again.
And I did, I did understand, you know, all that and, and I was going to reach out to him about what was going on with that situation too. And then, and then that came through, so I, so I will, I'll make sure that we have concrete information for you by the next, by the next meeting too. And regarding the, that process that it stays moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Doris?
Has the zoning administrator made a site visit to 5, I think it's 541, where I wrote?
I believe he was in the, had issued, I'll have to check my records. I know that there was a, steps being followed to, to go and that's also with, with the attorney, so I'll, I'll research both of those in, in this week coming.
Curious, thank you.
Okay. Any other new business? Harry?
Uh, yeah, Rick Sassa has been acting as clerk of the management mission.
Yes.
And without, without compensation.
Uh huh.
Which he waived. He wants to step down.
Uh huh.
So we'd like to get new clerk.
Uh huh. And you have no options at this point?
I have no options.
Okay. So.
I spoke to Kristen about it, she moved it.
Couldn't talk her.
She was interested, she's not interested.
Couldn't talk her into it, huh? Okay. So I guess we can put it out there that maybe Elizabeth could put it in her, her email block, that would maybe a good start. And, and Deb also has, has some electronic bulletin board or something, I guess.
I'll talk to her.
I'm not sure, Julie's shaking her head, let it.
She has, she has like an email blast where she spends mass emails and then she also has social media.
Okay, so those would be a couple of other options of where we could get it out there in case anybody could, would become interested to that. Is there any other new business? Public comment? Any public comment?
I can ask one question.
Okay.
Bob, monument down in West Paulette, did you get the name of the person who knocked it over?
I did not.
Are those McMahors on one side of it from that?
I have no idea, Doris.
The story I got, the story I got, Joe.
Just curious.
Um, one of the firefighters told me that it was a piece of equipment being delivered to somebody in Rupert and he made the wrong turn and he backed down and when he backed down with the tractor trailer, I believe, he hit the monument back and down the hill. And then the fire department pulled it back into position. Is that the same story you heard, Bob?
Well, the only thing I heard was Lee and Corey called me and asked me if the town would be okay with them fixing the monument. And I said, go for it, so he did.
That was, that was, that was the story that I heard, so. And I don't know, I don't know if the fire department heard anything or not, so.
Just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, who else has public comment? Frank? Okay, Eve? Larry? Any public comment tonight?
Should get the steps fixed.
Okay.
Sweet ones.
Ashley, did you have anything for public?
We're next.
Did you have anything for public comment? You've lost your turn. In the back row, I'm sorry, I can't remember your names from last week, but do you have any comment to make tonight? Thank you for coming. Any comment? All right, Frank?
Just need a cone on that hole, that green hole.
Okay. See, if you hurry, you probably want it at the firehouse, you can ask one of the guys to borrow.
Borrow a cone?
For the fire department.
Why don't you put a grate over it and then you don't have to drive around it, you don't have to drive over it.
We could have.
I'll put a grate on it and I'll charge it to you, Frank.
Well, that might grate some people.
Anybody want to make a statement?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.